All right, could you all join us and as Councilman Case leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Starnes, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us and for the blessings of the day. And Lord, we pray that you will be with this city council meeting with these leaders, Lord, that you will give them wisdom and the decisions that they have to make. And Lord, we pray for the citizens of Guthrie, a blessing on them. In all these things, we pray your will be done, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Start over.
All right, I'll call the Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting for Tuesday, June 4th to order. Second item on the agenda is community announcements and recognitions. Do we have anything, okay? Next item is the consent agenda. Three A's, approve the minutes of the last meeting held on May 21st. Entertain a motion. Discussion? All right. I got Chuck with a yes and show us what everybody else said. All right, so that's unanimous for everybody that's here. He's using his thumb, yes. All right. So we're adjourning the Public Works Meeting and I call to order the City Council Meeting. It's consent agenda there. We have a couple of items, approve the minutes from May 21st and approve the contract between the City of Guthrie and Mike Smith to provide grass management services to the airport's 81 acres and authorize the mayor to execute a contract. Entertain a motion. Still moved?
Second.
All right, got a motion at second, any discussion? All right, go ahead and cast your votes. And Chuck's giving us a thumbs up, so we got unanimous again. All right. Item three, discussion of possible action to cancel the September 17th regular City Council Meeting and reschedule a special City Council on September 10th. I'll let Leroy address that, I suppose.
We don't have a meeting on September 3rd already because of Labor Day, so the only meeting we have in September is on September 17th. The OML Annual Conference conflicts with that meeting, and it's in Tulsa this year, and normally we have some council members and staff attend the OML conference. So if it's agreeable with you all, staff would recommend that we cancel the regular scheduled meeting on the 17th and then call a special meeting for September 10th.
Okay.
Still moved?
So I got a motion at a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your ballots. Oh, I got another unanimous with the thumb there. All right. Item four, City Manager's Report. See how fast I got through the rest of this, okay?
Can I have a competition? I've got two items to report on. The first one is deals with federal tax credit economic development tools that we can use when we try to recruit or work with business and industry to expand. Their examples of the tools are the federal opportunity zones, new market tax credits, enterprise zones. These are all tax credit programs to induce investments from the private sector.
Knew that was coming.
See if he comes back. Didn't have it turned on. The opportunity zones were created in, by putting the Investment and Opportunity Act included in the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017. They're designed to stimulate long-term private investment in low-income urban and rural communities. The purpose is, as an economic development tool, it allows investors to realize significant federal tax benefits through investing capital gains in qualified opportunity funds. And the longer they keep the investment in the area, the bigger benefit they get. And so it's five years, 10 years, seven years, that type of thing. Opportunity zones are distressed census tracts that meet low-income community eligibility criteria. And a given census tract is a low-income community if it meets at least one of the following requirements. The tract has at least a 20% poverty rate, the median family income in the tract is below a certain threshold, the tract's population is less than 2,000 people, and it's within an apartment zone and is contingent with another low-income community. Localities qualify as opportunity zones if they have been nominated for that designation by the state and that nomination has been accepted by the Secretary of the Treasury. The number of low-income communities or census tracts in the state is determined by how many opportunity zones can be designated. The total number in the state is equal to 25% of the number, so if you got 100 qualified, you could only designate 25. And it's done by the governor. And Governor Fallon, working with Department of Commerce and other officials, designated 117 census tracts in the state for eligibility for the opportunity zones. What we are trying to do is shuffle some of our census tracts, so maybe some strategic areas for us will be eligible in the future. This may not provide immediate benefit because each state is dominated the maximum number of eligible tracts per statute. And the statute in legislative history shows they do not contemplate an opportunity for additional or revised designations after the maximum number of zones allowed have been designated. So they're kind of frozen place right now. Based on the legislation, the boundaries of the tract at the time of designation in 2018 do not change. So if you took an area and added it to a census tract, the area you add doesn't become eligible. The boundaries doesn't change of the original. And then from Department of Commerce, they said that the boundaries will not change until 2027. But the census only happens every 10 years, so if it's going to change in 2027, we need to change it now because we won't have another opportunity until 2030. So it may pay us dividends in between the census and also some other programs. But if you look at, in our county, there's two census tracts that are eligible for opportunity zones over on the eastern side by Langston and then south part of the City of Guthrie. It does not include the downtown, and it does not include where our 80 acres are. So that as an economic incentive or tool for recruiting business and industry, it doesn't cover two of our key areas. Again, just showing that the downtown Guthrie is not included. So we, through a PSAT process, you can, as part of the 2020 census, you can work with entities like ACOG to change those boundaries and change census tracts. And so working with ACOG, we tried to adjust our census tract to be more strategic. So what we have done is, we have looked at taking part of 602, this blue area, and 601, this census tract, this will be a new census tract that will just be downtown and hopefully will be, have income levels that will qualify us for these programs in the future. This tract to the south is eligible, this area is not, so we're hoping that this area adjacent would be. It's kind of interesting that downtown Edmund qualifies, but downtown Guthrie doesn't. A factor in that is the college students are in the census tract that downtown Edmund's in, so that makes a difference. So that may be a little hard to see, but the new census tract will start at the highway and be bounded on the north by Noble or 33, go past the railroad tracks, and so it will cover downtown. We think the social-economic characteristic of this area will make this new census tract eligible for some of these federal programs. And that's just, each census tract is made up of several census blocks, and those are just the census blocks out of those two tracts that will be, make up the new tract. Another program, the new market tax credit, it's a similar thing. We have used it more for industry than for retail development or housing development, but it's also a file of federal tax credit incentives for business and real estate to invest in lower-income areas. Basic eligibility requires development to be in a census tract with low, with income at or lower than 80% of the area median income or poverty to be greater than 20%. We think by creating a new census tract in downtown, it will help us on this program, but then we also looked at another one on new market tax credit. This census tract north of town is eligible, and again, 602 and 63 are eligible, but 601, so a big part of our downtown is not eligible, but we're, we think with this new census tract, that will help address that. But census tract 605 is a humongous census tract, and it starts north of town at the river, wraps all the way around downtown, and includes a lot of the new housing development just north of the county line. And working with ACOG, we're proposing to split that large census tract at Seward Road with the thought that this area skews the numbers for the northern half. And if we look at an industrial park in the future that needs rail service, predominantly the only area that we have adjacent to the City of Guthrie that's still in the school district and is outside the floodplains and is close enough to railroad to have a rail spur is in this area right here. So it would be helpful if we could split that into two census tracts, and this one would, if the numbers aren't skewed by this area, hopefully will become eligible for some of the federal programs. That's just kind of some of the things behind the scenes and trying to position ourselves to be more attractive in economic development that not everybody sees because it's a paper trail and paperwork working with ACOG to accomplish this, but just want to make you aware, we are trying to do things to position ourselves better for economic development in the future. I'll pause on this presentation to see if there's any questions that I might address. If not, we have some new members on the City Council that may or may not be fully updated on the ODOT TAP grant we got for a streetscape project on Division. And the project area you can see here, it's on Division, and it's from the alley north of Oklahoma Avenue to the alley south of Harrison and includes that part of Division. One of the challenges for this project, it is inside the Guthrie National Historic Landmark District, and that adds another layer of federal review from the National Park Service as far as the environmental review process. The budget for the project, I may have to flip to that so I could see it better. We got an ODOT grant for $678,406. The match from the city is $169,606. That is predominantly coming out of the funds that were generated as a result of the Mumford Sons Concert, some themes. And this project has been through its third city manager, and it may be on sport before it gets done. I wasn't here at the beginning of this, but the way they selected the architect didn't make the architect expenses eligible for the grant. If we'd have done it differently, we could have incorporated that and got part of those expenses paid through the grant, something that we will keep in mind in the future. There's drainage improvements that we will do. If we're going to tear up the streets and redo them, we don't want to not address the drainage and some of the water lines under that area so that we don't have to go back too quick. And then we've added permissive turn signals that Oklahoma and Harrison that are eligible for the TAP program. So that $220,000 will predominantly come out of CIP. So the total project would be $1,068,984 is the budget for the project.
And of that, we're paying less than $400, is that right?
We will pay $390, yes, sir.
Go ahead. I just thought that the drainage issue when it was discussed before was going to be taken care of by ODOT. I didn't realize that was a City of Guthrie expense. Thought that's why we wanted to do it at the same time as ODOT was going to take care of that.
It is not eligible for this grant because, partly because it wasn't included in the grant application that got approved. I don't know that the signals they would not had, but my understanding is, I don't know if it's because we didn't add it at the original time we made the application or not, but it wasn't in the application, so if we want to do it, we'll have to pay for it. And we just want to make sure, we don't want to put down a nice new street and sidewalks and then tear it up to redo the drainage. The original concept, there were new trees in this area between Oklahoma on Division to the alley, and then there were some new trees from Harrison south to the alley, south of Harrison. The intersection profile, and this is true for both Oklahoma and Harrison, there were bumpouts or curb extensions, whichever term you would like to use, and there would be a curb extension that protruded out into Oklahoma, and then there would be curb extensions that went out into Division Street on both. The concept is if you're standing at the curb and you don't have the curb extension, traffic can't see you if there's a car parked here. But if you have a curb extension, you have less distance to travel and you have more visibility standing here for oncoming traffic than traffic here. The concerns addressed by a lot of individuals that have a keen interest in historic preservation was that the curb extensions were not historically correct to the 1910s, 1920s, and that trees in the 1910s and 1920s, traditionally in downtowns, they use canopies for shade rather than trees, and you saw trees more in residential neighborhoods. Some of the things that we have tried to point out, really, if you look at our downtown, we already have curb extensions, they're just not concrete, they're painted. And so in effect, we have made those curb extensions by just painting lines so that nobody can park there to give more visibility. And so they're there, they're just not concrete. Somebody pointed out when we was visiting with the ODOT that it seems funny, we're so concerned about a concrete extension of that sidewalk, but we're not concerned about the new cars that are parked on the street all the time, but we're that concerned about being historically accurate. I thought that was kind of an interesting comment.
Just how about the asphalt on the road? That wasn't there in 1910 either.
That's what I was thinking. I was thinking the same thing. All brick. Pretty sure that asphalt wasn't.
In this case, if you look at Division where you have cars parallel parked, there is no curb extension, and that's part of the problem when people drive across Division is not only are you dealing with traffic, but you've got cars that are parallel parked that can come right into you as you drive across the street. So it's more busy because it's not even painted or anything, there's no protection. On the tree concerns, we tried to point out that there's already trees in the historic landmark. This, of course, is by the post office. This is along Harrison between First and Second. This is the parking lot at Harrison Division, so there's already trees down there. But we did adjust the project in the future, and part of the reason for the trees is if you look at this part of Division, there is no separation of the corridor, it's just a bland area. It looks like a 1970s intersection, not 1910. But what we proposed in this streetscape, and I flipped this over to make it easier, this is Division and this is Harrison, is we have proposed in lieu of replacing the painted curb extensions, leave those alone, but put in a new sidewalk, and then where you cross Division, put new curb extensions to help traffic crossing Division. And that would be true at Oklahoma and Harrison. The trees north of Oklahoma, we have removed, and we've left the five trees that would be south of Harrison. Our thoughts were to, the curb extensions, with no curb extensions across Harrison, Oklahoma would protect the historic view shed so that there was no impact on the historic view shed of those two major historic streets. But the curb extensions across Division would provide a better pedestrian safety crossing the state highway or Division, where there have been some accidents, and it would better connect the east and west sides of downtown. Again, I've already talked about the trees being limited, and again, there will be a permissive left turn signals on Division at both Harrison and Oklahoma. And when I made presentations on this project, that's probably the most favorite thing of everybody that when they make the presentations is those turn signals. Under Section 106 on National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, when federal funds are used in the project, it requires going through an environmental review process. And in communications back in April with ODOT, they have said that with the involvement of Cultural Resources, Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO as we normally refer to it in the National Park Services, the studies will likely not be completed till the end of this year, 2019. Then there will be a series of hearings. So in visit with ODOT the other day, they have experienced this in other communities where streetscape projects were done in historic districts, and they took quite a while as well. So this project will linger on until we can get through the environmental review process, and then subject to input from SHIPO and the National Park Service, we may be required to make further modifications to the project to address their concerns if they have concerns about any impact on the historic development. Just kind of an update for those that haven't heard it lately or new council members that maybe weren't fully aware of the project. Be glad to answer questions.
So we don't have an estimated timeline at all, do we?
Well, I thought we did, and then I was told we didn't. So originally, I was told it would go out for bids in September, and they changed staff people, and ODOT said, no, no, that guy wasn't right. It's going to be the end of the year before we can get through the environmental process to get findings from those federal agencies. And then once those findings come out, then we'll either have, if they have any findings that require modifications, we'll have to look at modifying the project. There could be a series of public hearings where interested parties have a chance to make comments. So I would say we'll be lucky by spring of next year to be in a position to move forward with actually bidding the project out and seeing what happens. That's why I said you might be on your fourth seat, manager.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll move on. Says request comments from members of the City Council. First, I wanted to welcome Chuck Burcher to his first meeting as a city councilman. Used to be here as a mayor, but I understand you were sworn in last night, and I know people are probably wondering why we didn't swear you in tonight, so I wanted to make sure we understood that.
I was sworn in, and right after that, I was sworn out.
But we'll start with you. You got any comments?
Well, first, I'd like to thank the community for letters and the prayer list and everything. I think everybody probably knows I had a stroke to my right side of my body, and I've got a lot of calls from city councilmen there, they've all called me and checked on my well-being, and I know several churches have had prayer lists out. I greatly appreciate that, and I'm not going to quit. I'm going to keep on getting better, and I am getting better. But I appreciate that from this community, and that's just the kind of thing I expect from this community because they've always stepped up to the mic. So I want to thank all of y'all who've called and checked on me and city employees and citizens of this town. Other than that, some kind of a newbie, that's all I've got.
All right.
I want to thank everybody for their contribution.
All right, welcome. And James Long, happy birthday. It's your turn.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. I don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
No, I'd like to make tonight short if I can.
Councilman Taylor?
How about those pokes? They're going to the super regional. That's basically it.
Councilman Channel, I know you didn't want to go first, so I started on the other end.
Oh, it don't matter.
You went first the last two times. I noticed.
You threw my mojo off. I'm going to say it, but I'm going to say it quiet. I think the rain's over, the big ugly rains. I know it's been killing the guys at Public Works and everything with all the holes and streets and trees and all that, but hang in there, we're going to see the sun and it's going to dry up. Then it'll be Oklahoma all over again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Case?
I'm with James Long. I think I'd like to keep this short.
Okay, I would too, but I will say a second what- Okay, I would too, but I would say, a second what Don just said there. We talked with Tenny Maker the other day, and they're going through some real fits. And I know there's going to be some, maybe some FEMA fallout on this, that we might get something to some relief, but I know the staff, I want to just stop and thank all the staff for their work through all these storms because it's been tremendous work for everybody, I'm sure. I know the chief shaking his head.
And we have, we have done all the documentation in case we are determined as a disaster area, and it will come down to the amount of disaster when you tabulate it all up. That process is ongoing. I think we're up to about thirteen counties now that has been declared as a federal disaster area, and there will probably be more. And yes, we would like to hope that we're included in that because not only does it provide some assistance to public entities on relieving us to some of the cost, it opens up programs to private business and individuals for low-interest loans and some aid as well. So we are still working on that, but there's not been a final determination.
All right. Thank you, and then? All right. Next item is to consider approval to convene into executive session pursuant to authority of Title 25 Oklahoma Statute 2001, Section 307B3, for the purpose of discussing the purchase or appraisal of real property, procurement of options to purchase industrial or retail sites for economic development. I'll take a motion.
So moved?
Agreed.
Let's make those votes.
How about Trent?
And Chuck says yes, and it's unanimous. All right, we're back, and I'll take a motion to come back out of executive session.
Second.
All right, so is that your vote, Chuck?
How about Trent?
Chuck?
Yeah.
All right, we got it. We got it unanimous. We're back out of executive session. The next item is to consider action on purchase or appraisal of real property, procurement of options to purchase industrial retail sites for economic development projects, and they're taking no action on that.
No action.
And so I'll adj-